Gentlemen, this meeting is of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is hereby called back into session. And we'll call the roll to establish quorum.
Yes, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item four is the 2021 redistricting discussion and selection of draft district boundary map. Madam Chair, I'll let you know that we do have at least one public comment in queue. I'm not sure if you want to follow the same format as last night, or you have a new one for today.
I think we'll have an opening by Natasha, and then listen to the public comment, and then pause public comment until we deliberate.
Yes.
And then go from there.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're here today to continue our conversation on redistricting. Doug Yocum is here. He's prepared to lead off where you ended last night, though I think it would be helpful to hear from you how you'd like to proceed this afternoon. And that's all the comments I have this afternoon for you. Would you like Doug to come up?
Mr. Yocum, do you have comments before we begin, or should we quickly take the public comment, or what do you think?
Public comment would be good to start with, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is John Merchant. I have been here before. I'm a 35-year resident of Rancho Marietta, and I just wanted to call to reinforce our initial community input that we would like to remain in the district that we're in, which is District Four. We were redistricted in 2010 when we were removed from District Five, and some of the discussion to date has been that we might go back there. Being that it appears rather unfortunately that District Five will have a new election in June, we would get a new supervisor, and that would be our fourth supervisor in 11 years. So with the issues that are confronting us going forward in the next 10 years, I think it's real critical that we establish some continuity. The purple zone in District Four, we're at the bottom of it, but I want to reinforce for the last time that everything that's in that district moves to the north that will impact us over the next 10 years. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your diligence, and good luck with the rest of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And please transfer the next caller, and I believe that's all that we have as of Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
For the last time.
And do you mind muting the meeting in the background?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Andres Ramos again. I hope you're doing all very well. I know we're all close to the end of this journey, but I just wanted to call in following up from last night's hearing, and just to really share my thoughts and concerns. It seems that a lot of the discussion has been focused not really on trying to best incorporate the community's input and feedback, but a lot of discussion around what you all as individual supervisors want for your districts. And I just really want to emphasize that redistricting is supposed to be focused on keeping communities together for fair and effective representation, not the sort of, I want this area for X, Y, or Z reason. And there's been a lot of comments, like the gentleman who spoke before me about Rancho Marietta and what that community wants, and I think it's had the most public comment in terms of written comments submitted. A ton of people called in last night about the API community in the South County area, but yet I've heard very little discussion by you all about how you can incorporate that as best as possible into the maps. You know, I heard some talk about keeping a line here between Districts One and Two. I haven't heard any public comment, no constituency of people asking for that. And so I understand that as supervisors individually, you may have a desire for the map to look one way or the other, but really, the seats belong to the community, not to you as individuals, and ultimately, the community's desire should be incorporated. And so respect what the people in Rancho Marietta want, and try to incorporate that. Respect what the people in the South County want, and try to incorporate that. And so I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for mentioning the public comment from the community in the South County and suggesting that that be considered. I ask that you follow that leadership and please try to incorporate our request to be kept together in the South County, same as with Rancho Marietta and other communities that have weighed in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we begin our deliberative --
Madam Chair.
Is that the end of our public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the gentleman that just spoke.
Okay.
And hopefully, he's watching. He made a statement that is very inaccurate. He said that when he mentioned discussion about the lines between Districts One and Two, and that no one had called in advocating adjustment to those lines, we had nearly 20 people be very clear that they supported two of the early maps that were produced by NDC. In each of those cases, the southerly boundary between Districts One and Two were kept pretty much as is. So I don't know if you missed that, but there was a very large portion of folks that called in, including a representative from the NAACP, that made it very clear that they had a specific preference for the lines between those two districts. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, and do we have any other public comments?
No, Madam Chair, not at this time, and we'll leave the comments open.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, for now, we'll go to -- we'll keep comments open and come back to them after we deliberate.
Yes.
Okay, and so, did you have any comments, Doug, before we begin?
Sure. Afternoon. Doug Yocum with National Demographics Corporation. I've been joined today by the president of our company, Doug Johnson. He's come here hopefully to witness the closing of this particular issue in Sacramento County.
We're hoping to.
I'm wearing my Dave Cox tie today. When I grabbed it this morning, it reminded me of a story, if you'll indulge me for just a moment. Dave became leader in 2001, a redistricting year, and he came to me and he said, "I really don't know what I'm getting into regarding this issue." And I said, "You're right. You're going to be the guy who has to decide who gets hammet." And if you're not familiar with Southern California geography, Hammett is a tiny little town in Riverside County that, at the time, was highly Republican and full of senior citizens. And it was fought over in the 1991 round. And so he looked at me and he said, "That's my job?" And I said, "Yes, that's -- you're going to have to decide who gets hammet." And so during the 2001 round, he had very many, quite a few hammets that he decided on. And he did it because he was a guy who was very good at getting people together, making a decision, and coming to an ending on those issues. He was just good at that. And I know some of you knew him, and I wanted to remind you of Dave, because when I got the tie this morning, it reminded me. I don't have any new ideas today, but I do have an old one.
Well, at least you're direct.
Going back to the start, the problems were, there were three problems that we were trying to deal with at the very beginning of this. First and foremost was the underpopulation of Districts Three and Four, and the arm that came into Gold River for District Four. So there are -- our draft maps tried to solve the District Three issue very quickly by adding unincorporated community Gold River to District Three, takes care of that problem. Then that increases the District Four problem by about 9,000, 8,000, 9,000 people. So in rough numbers, Four would need to have 40,000 people at that point. There's only three ways to do it. Number one, move west. Take in the communities of Del Paso Heights and the areas to the west of the airport. That would move District One south, probably to Fruit Ridge, Little Pocket, maybe more, probably not much more. And then District Two would have to move south, perhaps going into the city of Elk Grove for 40,000. Second option is taking, adding 40,000 folks from the top of District Three to District Four, which we discovered last night is Foothill Farms. Then Four, I mean Three, would have to move into Rancho Cordova for an additional 40,000 The third way is the way we have it in Map 204, which was a draft map for your consideration. And that is doing the Gold River thing, and then moving Four onto the eastern side of Rancho Cordova, and keeping Rancho Marietta in District Four, which is what they have said they want. So I give you the options, and we can proceed from there.
So I appreciate your overview, and I think I'd like to make some opening comments. I've been awake half the night thinking about this, and I think, I don't know if this is something that would work for Supervisor Desmond and everyone concerned, but I have some thoughts around some of the conversation that we had last night. One of the things that Supervisor Desmond, you had stated is that you were concerned about breaking up communities, which I completely respect, and I think all of us are in that frame of mind. And I just had a thought around the fact that this map actually gave me a large portion of Carmichael. I think the amount of Carmichael that I have now is 11,552 people, which is kind of your --
The north.
It's the heart of you, which is where you live and everything, right? So if we gave Carmichael, if we put Carmichael, all of Carmichael back into District Three, take it from District Four, that would increase the deficit in District Four. But your concern about breaking up Foothill Farms or North Highlands, we could then take all of Foothill Farms and put that in District Four, and then to top off and finish the solution, I'm thinking, take Mather and put it into District Three. And if you did that, and this is, maybe you can pass this down to Doug, that's a map that shows, that map shows what it looks like to just move Mather, not residential, but just the Mather into District Three. It keeps Foothill Farms whole. It makes Carmichael whole.
Is this building off of the map from last night where we left it?
You know, we were just having, I know you took Foothill Farms back, so I don't know if you're okay with this. I'm just saying, this would solve the problem of Rancho Cordova really wants to be in District Five and Three, so it would keep them there. It would keep Rancho Marietta with Frost in District Four. It would give you, it would make Carmichael whole, which I totally, in District Three. And it would keep Foothill Farms whole. And Foothill Farms actually has some commonality in that our P-bid, our antelope P-bid, is it runs into Foothill Farms. So they have some economic, community and economic development commonality. And then there is still, if there was more needed, that little notch of Fair Oaks. Fair Oaks, that, just that little square notch of Fair Oaks could go into District Four if you needed a couple more. The numbers are here. I should have passed, I don't have an extra copy. I wish I did.
I can do it.
If you can copy that for everyone, those are some, how the numbers stack out. It gets us pretty close. I know you have to give up something, but you get Mather, which is a really great economic hub. And, okay, so, and she'll get copies of the numbers to show you that. And then I'm going to go to Supervisor Serna next.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Unless Doug has questions about that.
You described it very clearly. We could check it out, but.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to Doug in terms of his opening comments about there being three ways to do it. I guess I would respectfully disagree. I think there's more than three ways, because quite frankly, we have not had much discussion at all about really future growth, and how that really comes into play here. So I think it's something we should exhaust a conversation about today in terms of this last difficult part. And, you know, I think with the Alberta Pacific Plan, with Easton, Cordova Hills, and South of Folsom, all of which are, you know, arguably relatively much more entitled than some other growth areas or closer to development, and therefore likely population growth in the next 10 years, I think that's something we should add to our list of topics this afternoon.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and I'm just looking at the numbers here. First, I want to just preface it by saying, you know, obviously, we're still struggling with this because we have, we care very much about our districts, right? And we don't want, we want to do what's best for our districts and the folks we represent. So from that perspective, I just have a tremendous amount of respect for all of my colleagues up here on the dais, and I'm honored to be up here and among them. I think that, you know, I mentioned this before, I mean, my first preference is, would be Map 204 with the changes suggested by Supervisor Serna and incorporating those. But certainly out of deference and respect to our friends in Rancho Cordova, and certainly my senior member of the board here, Supervisor Natoli, I think he might have some ideas on a different approach, which I'd certainly love to see. And then after we see that, I have some ideas as well, if we want to work within the framework of kind of the map that we started looking at last night, dividing up Rancho Cordova between Three and Five. I will, I do have one question for you, Doug. I'm just, I'm curious, was there, you know, I went back again and read the letter from Rancho Cordova. Did they have a, I mean, and I saw, I think it was a proposed map, and I know we kind of swapped it between Three and Five. Did they say anything specific about, you know, any rationale behind not wanting to be, have that area in District Four instead of District Three? Was there, I don't know, and I didn't watch the meeting. I don't know if there was any kind of justification in terms of keeping communities of interest together, things like that.
The council discussed that. It did not appear in the letter that I read this morning.
Was there another letter?
A council person suggested that they don't have a lot in common with Folsom and that area.
Okay.
But another councilwoman pointed out that, yeah, we do. We're in the same school district. So obviously, it goes both ways. And as you saw, the vote was three to two, so I don't think they, there was agreement on the council as to what the, what they should do, except the three prevailed over the two. And that's how we got the letter. Does that add to your question?
No, that, I mean, that's helpful. I, and, because I was thinking about that last night. I don't know if any of you have seen the show Queen's Gambit.
Yep.
Have you seen that? So, you know, she looks up at the ceiling, sees the chess pieces moving. That's what I was doing last night, seeing pieces of the map moving. I probably wasn't the only one either doing that, but, no, that's helpful, because it did occur to me, is like, you know, that Rancho Cordova is in the same school district as some other parts of District Four. I mean, I think Rancho Cordova, obviously, their number-one preference would certainly be to keep themselves entirely within District Five. So, you know, I will defer to Supervisor Natoli and see if he had any additional ideas that might help us get there. And if not, if we want to keep pursuing this as a split between Five and Three, I have some other ideas for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and appreciate the comments of my colleagues this afternoon. I, just before session, I wanted to be sure I understood kind of where we left off last night, so I'd asked Doug, and, you know, obviously, the map that he put up there. Not unlike all of you, and I'm sure many folks who have observed, you know, a lot of thoughts went through my head about how we might address this, and certainly keeping in mind the testimony we had yesterday. But a couple of thoughts I had, and I think both Supervisors Frost and Desmond have introduced or reintroduced, you know, where we had gone with some of the conversation for quite a while. Last evening, that was having the District Three, which would, under one scenario, include Gold River, and then take in the area east of Sunrise, basically that portion of the city of Rancho Cordova. I see what Supervisor Frost has put forward, and that's, I think, introduced into the conversation, some, you know, different elements. And Supervisor Desmond, obviously, will speak to those as we go on with the conversation. Two thoughts occurred to me, is kind of where we had left off with the struggle of trying to keep, you know, largely the city of Rancho Cordova, or all of it, within District Five, and the overage and underage. And so a couple of thoughts occurred to me. One, I think where we left it, we were at, and correct me, Doug, we were about 9.9%. District Four was under, and D5 was over, about 5.6 or 8.
You're exactly correct.
Okay.
In the current, where we left it last night.
Right, right. And then the others were fairly close to being right on spot, Districts One and Two and Three.
Right.
And so what occurred to me, just in that scenario, and again, two things I wanted to introduce, one of them's not old, but then there was thoughts about with the map, working out the map that we left with, Gold River, which has about 8,500. And I know that Supervisor Desmond expressed desire to represent the area, obviously Supervisor Frost did too, but if we weren't going to come across the river or the freeway and take in Rancho Cordova with District Three, that's one way to bring additional, and again, I know you spoke to the thing about the arm for Gold River, but it's currently in District Four. So that was one thought that occurred to me, again, not novel. And the only other piece that came to mind, at least up on this northern end, was there's a small segment, about 1,885 residents, where Watt, Folsom, Highway 50 come together. And the thought there was, is that District Three runs that whole course along there, and that would be a way to move about 2,000 people from D5 to D3. And again, I'm not presuming anybody agrees with that, but it would be a way to reduce the overage. And then, I guess, the last thought, I just wanted, and it goes to what Supervisor Serna said, and I know you've given us wise counsel about staying within the 10%, but the aspects of growth, because this configuration that you show on the map right now with D4 includes the Cordova Hills, and I'm going to just state the numbers, 8,000 units. Easton and Glenboro with combined about 48, almost 4,900 approved units. And then the Alberta Pacific Plan, which has 5,800 units. And then, not including South of Folsom, but if I did the math correctly, just with what I recited there, about 18,700 units, many of which are not just planned, but they're entitled. And again, I know we've got to have, meet these percentages, but there is potential under the map that you currently have up there for significant growth within an area that shows the underage, at least with the current census data. So I do think, as Supervisor Serna says, that could help maybe bring some focus to what our conversation is today, knowing that we can account for, but we still have to meet those margins. So I wanted to point those out. But my two suggestions were that, and maybe we need to talk about where Supervisors Frost and Desmond have been looking at some potential adjustments, and how that might work for the communities that are represented there. But I think that the one area in D5, it has some commonality with, is where D3 and D5 meet, right at the Watt Avenue 50, Folsom, American River area, might be an area where a couple thousand folks could be adjusted if we needed to try to shave, you know, shave the margin on the D5 side. So that's all I have right now.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Natoli, I got your second, your last two points. The first one regarding Gold River, I wasn't clear. Were you suggesting it should be in A District, or which one were you suggesting?
Well, if you're trying to meet underages and overages, that, to what you said, kind of on the simple side of this, that, again, I think certainly Supervisor Desmond's expressed a desire to have that come into District Three. It currently resides in District Four, and if District Three were not going to come south of 50, then one way to adjust that, again, I don't know what does the rest of the numbers, would be have Gold River be retained in District Four. So that was the thought I had.
I see.
So again, I throw those out as ideas, and I've heard some other ideas that may help us get there quicker than anything that might come about what I suggested, so.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear, wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, let's see what Supervisor Kennedy will say next.
I think I just wanted to comment on one thing that was said about Rancho Cordova and saying, you know, pointing out that one of the council members did mention that there's one school district that represents both. Having been a graduate of that school district, I know it well. And there's also, if you look at the new growth, the new growth out there actually has a lot more in common with Folsom than it does with District Three even. So I don't understand the reasoning for why it is that Rancho Cordova wants so badly not to be in District Four. It puzzles me.
If we take into account the new growth, and, I mean, how close does that get us? Or can we take that new growth into account?
We can take it into account ephemerally. In other words, we know that there are approved projects, as Mr. Natoli says, but they don't exist. That's, right now, they are zeros on the map. So when you count up your districts, as you draw them today or when we end the process, you want to be absolutely sure that when you add up your pluses and minuses, it's less than 10%. I also advise, since we're an urban county, that we not I also advise, since we're an urban county, that we not go too far past the 2 or 3 percentage range, because people could say, well, 1% is...
317, 17,000?
3,000 people, or, is my math wrong? 1% of a district off is 3,000, 3,000 people.
3,200.
So, if it's 3% off, then that's not, almost 9,000 people. So, someone could say, well, perhaps this is not equal representation, which is what, if we go back to the 1950s redistricting was all about. So, I cautioned you at the very beginning on that, but Mr. Natoli is correct. You can take it into consideration, but you have to realize that the people that you're talking about are not there. And so, your pluses and minuses are going to be on your sheet, and then people will judge you based on that.
Just to add one point, too, when we, we talk about that in the criteria, planned growth is a justification for, you know, with the, with the limitations I was mentioning, it's, it's a justification within the 10%. If you go beyond 10%, then it's what they call presumed unconstitutional. The burden of proof then changes in court, and your, your map has to be the best possible map out there, and any better map would then beat you in court. So, definitely, when you're talking about presumed, presumed growth or expected growth, it's a good justification for being, you know, a larger deviation, but you still have to be within 10%.
Right.
Madam Chair, guys, one other comment.
Yeah, please.
Was, I neglected to, just on what you circulated, I do think the discussion, if we focus in on what you proposed, and what Supervisor Desmond responded to, I want to have a conversation around Mather. That is inhabited, there's about 4,000-plus residents in Independence of Mather, and plus those who were sat on the community campus and so forth. So, if we get a serious focus on, on that map, I want to say that I think Mather should be in play in that conversation, which I'm sure it will be, but that's all I had to add.
You mean, in play to go to...
To be retained in D5, but, you know, again, if we're talking about trying to get numbers with, you know, with, with the D3, if they're, if we're going that direction, I'm certainly willing to entertain that. But I, at this point in time, I think it should retain in D5 with the, if Cordova stays in large part, establishing the older part of Cordova stays there. So, we can take a look at the numbers, but, and I don't know how we get to begin to then juggle some of this, but I'm interested to see how some of those numbers come out.
And I don't think North Highlands, I think North Highlands is possible to go to D4, but I think you feel the same way, or do you feel the same way about North Highlands as you do about Foothill Farms? Because I, I don't think North Highlands fixes it like Foothill Farms does. It's such a clean line with Foothill Farms. But I think there was a path with North Highlands.
Right.
But I think there's more adjustments needed after North Highlands with...
I think, you know, I will say this, is that I, and I, and I, you know, I talked about it yesterday when we were thinking about breaking up Foothill Farms. I mean, my first priority is certainly to keep the communities of similar interest together. There certainly is, to me, a lot of appeal in, you know, bringing Carmichael together into one district. And maybe we could just, I don't know, I mean, I feel like we better start plugging some numbers in and try to get some things, I mean, that might be, so I can just start with an idea that I had, Doug, maybe we could, if we pull up, could we pull up the map where we left off yesterday?
Certainly. If the staff behind the scenes can cooperate, we'll put it on the screen.
Is that the map that goes with? Thank you.
But you got to get that undo button working, Doug, because, you know, I suspect we're...
Get your fingers, get those fingers rolling.
Undo and redo. What you see is where we left off last night.
So, and again, just for, oops, I just lost the screen.
Thank you. I was going to ask you for that.
Something that, that I was just toying around with, if we were going to keep this split, right, between five and three, just would like to maybe explore some numbers here. What if we took all of, what if you took, and again, this is something I don't, I don't like to do, but I think it's, it's something at this point we need to explore. What if you took all of North Highlands and put it in District Four?
All right.
What would that do for the numbers? And it's, it's certainly a community that's near and dear to my heart, and, but I think if, if it's kept whole in a neighboring district...
As whole as it can be, because part of it is still...
Well, it's a funky, I mean, North Highlands and Foothill Farms are both a little bit, are both a little bit funky in their boundaries, right?
Yeah.
North Highlands is 42,700 people.
And then, if you made that swap with Carmichael, put all of Carmichael whole into District Three? What if you did both of those things, what would that look like? And I, you know, I hope you don't mind indulging me here, but...
No, I'm fine.
We'll see how it, how it looks.
I'm trying to make it work. I'm open.
Okay, I see it, and...
That's the Carmichael line, you see that?
We'll have to count it up here, just a moment.
Okay.
That is a big chunk of Carmichael.
I think it's about 11,000 people.
It's 11,552. I wish I could, wish I had a magnifying glass. I can't see the streets, but I, is that Dewey where that, that's probably at Dewey that it, on the right?
Coil is the one that, that's, that goes right through it?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Does it, does it go up a little further north?
Yeah, it looks like it does.
Oh, yes, you're right. Doug, let's hire Serna.
So, 11...
11,471, yes.
There might be one additional one somewhere, but, okay. And then, so what if you, what if you, now, can you, can you hit go on this one, and then do the same thing over in North Highlands?
Did you get the whole thing, Doug?
Okay, give it to four, right?
Is there something missing at the very top?
There's like, there's 100 people somewhere missing, I think, but, I mean, it's close enough.
Well, let's see if there's any holes when we...
There's something at the very top. Oh, well, maybe, that's weird.
Um...
Yeah, that right there.
Just to straighten out the line? All right.
Is that Carmichael?
I think it's, yeah, it, yeah, it is.
Nine, five, six, zero.
Yeah, that, that fixes it.
Here, I'll pull it up.
There's 200 folks there. Actually, that is, those last three blocks that I just added, those are in Citrus Heights.
Oh.
So, clean that up, might have to clean that up.
Perhaps they're your friends who want their zip code changed.
They could be. You've heard of them, huh? That's a longtime problem.
So, anyway, on the, you're now 13,000 over, Mr. Desmond?
Right, so now you'd have to go over to North Highlands.
And four is short by 40,000.
Right.
So, you want to do the North Highlands switch?
Yeah, plug, plug that in. I mean, you know, I mean, the way I think about it, we're remedying, you know, one community being broken up, and we're, North Highlands moving it, but at least keeping it together. So, I just wanted to explore the numbers, see if we can make it, make it work for population purposes.
All right, let's, let's see if I can do the quick way here.
We're, Doug, you're working from the map where we left, last, left it last night, correct? So, that, that, when he's, when you say District Three is over now with that adjustment by 13,000, that includes the shift that you made between one and three relative to Campus Commons and Sac State, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Let's see, who has North Highlands now?
Well, three is going to come up needing after this.
Okay, I'm going to target four. Oops, from three. Let's see if this does. Nope, it's just doing blocks. Oh, here we go.
You can't just plug in a zip code now, it's nine, five, six, six, zero.
I'm using the Census's CDP, and let's see if this works. Yep, it did. Let me just pan out to make sure that we're contiguous here. Okay, that's, the change we're making now is 48,000. And if you look at the map, you'll see that there's a tiny little corridor going from Carmichael that keeps Foothill Farms in your district. And the red area is 48,000 people, and that's the portion of North Highlands that's in your district that we are now assigning to four. Ready to go?
Yep.
All right, here we go.
Hold on.
Oh, guess what I forgot to do? Insider, insider stuff, sorry.
How come there were 48,000? I thought there were less in North Highlands. That's going to make it even more of a delta.
All right, I have to wait for my computer to stop syncing, and that's a, that's a technical term, and I apologize. Just learned it myself this year. There you go.
So, how does that look for the deviation now?
Three is under by 35,000, and four is over by 5,000.
Do you already have Gold River in three?
Gold River's in three, and there's a significant portion of Rancho Cordova currently in three.
So, so, does this include putting that La Riviera area back in District Three, down the southern part of...
Okay. If you look at the map, where I have the hand right now, that's La Riviera, it's currently in five. I heard that described as the portion that's in the Folsom School District, and the portion of La Riviera that I have the hand on now is in the city of Sacramento, and that is currently in three.
How much was three over, or what were the numbers again for three and four?
Three is currently under by 35,000 people, and four is over by 5,000, which is less than 2%.
So, four is, is, so that part of La Riviera, I'm sorry.
No, you got the floor.
That, that part of La Riviera down there, we took, that's, that's where your, your pointer is, was that in District Five still, where you just were?
This part over here?
Yeah.
That's in District Five.
So, leave, what if we left that in District Three? That area from Watt to Mayhew, which is, it's in District Three right now.
Right, I thought we, I thought we put that back last night.
Yeah, I thought we did, too. That was a mistake last night.
Anyway, I will do that now, if you'd like.
Right, is that right?
I think you might be getting close. We may not be here till midnight.
Now, don't jinx this. Oh, haha, all right, I know what I did wrong. See this over here? Supposed to do it by block.
Just for the record, La Riviera is in Sac City Unified.
Right, that area I have right now. Yeah, it's in the, I think that's probably the justification to put it in District Three, because it's the same...
It's not Folsom.
School district, right.
Okay, we've picked up 7,000 folks here. You want to put them into District Three?
Yes.
Yes, there's where they're at right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh-oh. What's going on here?
Sorry, that was my fault. I was trying to get to this screen, sorry about that.
Trying to give us a heart attack, though?
Yes, I am, I'm sorry.
Can you get it up?
Do you want to speak?
Can I keep, keep going? I have a couple...
Yeah, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Any, any, want me to keep going? I had a couple of ideas.
Keep going, we're, we're listening to you.
So, I was wondering, so Supervisor Serna, what do you think about the area north of the river over there? If I take that back into District Three? Again, just to bring the deviation down a little bit.
The Campus Commons?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not Sac State, the north, north part of the river. So, what if you put that back in, Doug? That area on the north, or southwest corner, right there, yeah, the area north of the river?
Campus Commons.
Right.
Did that used to be in three?
It's in three now.
In three now, yeah.
Ooh, this whole area here?
Yeah, everything north of the river, right.
Into three from, I think it's in, currently in one.
Nope. No, no.
No, no, no.
North of the river.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'll just close this. Reject. You guys are getting good at your geography here.
No.
No, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh darn it, all right.
A river runs through it, Doug.
Does he need to get rid of a few, because he could give me back, that he has 2,300 in Orangevale that would make Orangevale whole for District Four? It's only 2,300 people. I don't know if that gets you, makes it worse, but...
Let's see how this, how this looks.
Okay, I found 5,000 folks for you.
Yep, there we go.
Hit go. Hit go.
Hit it.
All right. 3 is now 22, 23,000 under, which is 7.2%. And let's look at 1 real quick. 1 is now 7,000 over, which is 2.2%.
What about the rest of them?
How about 5?
3 is way under, okay. How, how much is 3 under?
22,000, almost 23,000 people.
So if you, if you, if you zoom out a little, Doug, I'm just, what if, and again, I was just, and I'll defer, this will all defer to Supervisor Natoli, what if we messed with the east side of Rancho Cordova and pushed District 3 out further that way? It may not put, may not pull in much in terms of population, but it would be in the growth area.
So, so you're talking about east of the green-yellow boundary there?
Yeah, yeah.
To the east and westboro area, you could, you know, as long as you...
What I called Aerojet last night.
Yeah, I, I think you could, you could use an extension of what, of what would be, what will be Hazel, I mean, for, for District 3.
Yeah, that would be contiguous.
Yeah.
Right, can we look at that anyway? What do you think?
Yeah, I, no, that's fine, yeah, because it's coming out of District 5 anyway. I mean, under this scenario, it's, you know, it's in District 4, and there's not a whole lot of residents there, but I think it would be logical up that corridor going to the...
Is that Aerojet?
Yeah, Aerojet, Easton Glenborough.
Yeah, there's Aerojet Road right in the middle of it.
Yeah, some of you use Aerojet Road as a freeway off ram.
You want to experiment with that a little bit?
Yeah.
You have Easton Place, which is going to be a, you know, high-density development right at the light rail station.
It's going to be beautiful. Probably 20.
I don't know. Close to utilities, I don't know next to, I would think so, if they're going to start somewhere, I would think Patrick's probably going to start.
There should be a Folsom line in there.
Yeah, take it up to the Folsom city limits line, yep.
But...
Should be, if you go a little further to the east there, I think you're, you're maybe looking at it.
Not a lot of population, but there will be.
Can you see on that map where the Folsom line is, Doug?
It's a little further to the east, it's covered up by that legend. I think it's right in there, Sue.
Is it possible there's only 3 people there?
No.
Can't be right.
Only 3 people. It's still included as future growth though, if you were under, I guess, you could, you know. There's the Folsom line right there, yeah.
Okay, the Folsom line goes like that, right along the freeway, but... Right there, that's the auto mall. So my question is...
That's Folsom.
Yeah, the, it's Folsom Boulevard.
Thin, thin red line, yeah, the thin red line's the Folsom city limits, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So south of that.
I think Hazel is the defining line.
The auto mall's not in the county.
No, it's not.
The auto mall is not in the county.
But El Grove Honda, I mean, uh...
It's in, it's in the city of Folsom.
Folsom Honda is, all right.
I just wanted to be sure.
Folsom Honda's in, Folsom Lake Honda's in the county.
Hondas are in, Fords are out.
Yeah, Ford, yep, Folsom Lake Ford's in the city. We do have a tax sharing agreement with them, though, still.
Okay, I'm adding to 3, sources 4. I'm not finding any people.
Well, it'll be future growth.
The Census doesn't believe there's people there.
Yeah, that's a growth area.
Yeah.
So there are houses on all these streets?
No.
No, it will be.
There will be.
There will be.
It's all future growth.
It's zero now?
Well, it's business and growth, Aerojet is...
Business and industrial.
Got some exciting things coming.
My, my, my thought just on this was, if that is included, then that helps us explain the deviation a little more, because it's growth. I mean, that's just what I was...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, I was just surprised that there were no people, but I'm not familiar, so... My fault.
And then you have a wedge in there, it looks like of county area below White Rock down to the Rancho city limits line there, so I don't know how you want to...
Yeah.
Might want to line that up, yeah, right there, yeah, well, I don't know if you're going to go that far out. Let me find.
And White Rock is unincorporated there?
Mm-hmm, yeah, right along there, yeah.
3 people. Wow.
More cows than people over there.
Yeah.
Dave and I were driving up in Susanville one day, and we, I commented on, there were a lot of cows out there. And he said, "Yep, we prefer them."
Sounds like Dave. What about right up to Highway 50 there, you're saying, along the creek?
Okay, one more, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, there you go, and one little spot there.
Oh, that gave a little bit of people.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a mobile home park there and a couple of other...
Yeah, we, we found 176 people, Supervisor. Is this a go or not?
Yeah. Fine.
Hit it.
Hit it.
Now what are you looking at?
What's the deviation now? D5 is still...
I can't, I didn't receive a D5 number, what's the number for D5?
Yeah, it's, can you scroll, Doug, see at the top, we can't see what D5's numbers are.
All right, uh, let's see. 5 would be, is over by 11,000 in this so far, and then 3 is still under by 22.
So I have one other suggestion, it's only about 1,800 folks, but if you want to go back down to, to the La Riviera area?
La Riviera?
Rich, was that the totality of some of the changes?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was, and I, this was my thought, thanks for indulging me, and I figured, this is close, maybe we can...
Nibble around the edges a little bit.
So there's the triangle right in the middle of your map there, just, where's, where the Highway 50 insignia is there, Doug? Yeah, you just come down a little bit, come down where the Highway 50, yeah. That triangle on there, Cal Center Drive, Folsom Boulevard, Watt.
Yeah, it says here, it's Tech Center Drive.
Yeah, yeah, Tech Center Drive. Yeah, that area there, just that triangle.
From 5?
Look, and again, would look to, to District 3, Rich.
No, other triangle.
No, no, wrong triangle, no, no, got to go, go back to where the Highway 50 sign is, Doug.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
There you go, yeah, there you go. That one.
That's all business, right?
No, no, there's fourplexes and apartments and, um, some single-family, some duplexes. No. About 1,800 people there.
You're right, it's 1,800.
Okay.
You know another thing Dave Cox said? Don Natoli knows where everybody is buried in that district.
Someday I'll be buried there too.
1,800, Mr. Desmond?
Rich, would you be, push a go?
Yeah, we have.
Okay. Uh, there's some blocks we need to add here, just a second. The freeway is blocked, the Census Bureau makes freeway sections into blocks.
Is that for highway funding?
I don't know why they do it. All right.
Okay. Now what are your numbers look like?
Where does that put 3 in 5 now?
Let's see, 3 is under by 21,000, 5 is over by 9,000.
Well within 10%, right?
Let's see, 2.9 for 5. 3 is 6.5.
Barely.
As it stands...
Within the margin of error.
6 and 1/2 plus, I'm looking at, trying to find 4 here. 1.6, 6 and 1/2. Yeah, you're under, this is about 9.5 deviation, total deviation.
So it didn't get us anywhere, I mean...
Yeah, it did.
You're within the margin.
Within the margin.
And you have growth areas in both 4 and 3, and 1, and 5, and 2.
Does it, does it work?
So does this mean, does this map show Rancho and, a portion of Rancho in 3 then?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be clear.
So, so the portion of District 3 that includes Rancho is from Sunrise east to their city limits, and then on over to the Aerojet, is that right, Doug?
Yes.
And Gold River remains in District, I mean, goes into District 3, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you don't have to, you don't have to switch math or...
No, no.
Are you happy with that?
There, there's no population south of White Rock down there, right, Don?
Oh, where are you looking at?
South of the area we took in, I mean, I'm just, I was just, you know.
No, no, no.
It's country.
There's nothing out there.
Yeah, you got your, some, some mining operations and obviously some of the Aerojet property that, and there's some future development, I think, over time Rancho Cordova will come out towards, well, they've already started some of the Elliott development there along White Rock, but not right at that location.
Could, could I, Doug, would you mind going up? Some of my staff just, it's something I overlooked, if, I think in the North Highlands thing, we, we took part of Foothill Farms out.
No, we put it back last night, I think.
No, we did, I, I know, but I think there's, is there an area that's east of I-8?
That's the area that's contiguous to the P-Bid.
This...
No, go south.
Yeah.
Let me quickly try to find...
There might be a little sliver there, Sue, I think that could be Foothill Farm, I'm not sure.
Are you saying that still ended up, it left in 4?
Yeah, in the North Highlands, I...
According to my map, Foothill Farms is entirely in District 3 in, in this iteration.
Got it, okay, okay. Well...
Was there an Orangevale piece you mentioned?
Oh, yeah.
But then, I don't think, District 3, District 3 can't stand to lose very much, I don't think.
Right.
There's about 2,300 in Orangevale, and there's a couple blocks in Fair Oaks that are in District 4, that's a couple hundred people, I don't know if you want to clean that up to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Maybe it'll even out if we...
Yeah, might even out.
Okay, so there's about, I think, a small portion of Orangevale in District 3 that could go make Orangevale whole in District 4, and there's a couple blocks of Fair Oaks, a couple hundred people in District 4 that could make Fair Oaks whole with Supervisor of District 3. But I don't know if that makes his numbers worse, that gives him a couple more, so actually...
Right.
No, that gives me 2,300 and you a couple hundred, so it, it might make it worse.
I, I found the area of Orangevale that is in District 3. It's right here.
Yeah.
What would you like to do?
Well, it'd be nice to have it whole in District 4, and then take whatever is Fair Oaks in District 3 and make it whole in District 3.
All right, we'll do Orangevale first.
I mean, do you feel that way?
All right, I, if we can clean up the communities of interest, I think that's...
Seems like a good thing.
I think that's a good thing.
All right, this is 2-4.
And we put all of Rio Linda and Alberta in District 4, right, Doug? I think we did.
I have to remember. Yes, we, we fixed the Rio Linda thing last night, but we can check. Okay, this takes 2,200 people from 4, I mean, from 3 and gives it to 4.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now our deviation's greater in 10%, though.
Yes, it is.
Okay, but you're going to add some back into Fair Oaks?
Yeah. I don't know if it'll be enough, but there might be some other cleanup, well, there's no cleanup by Foothill Farms, let's see, where else would there be cleanup?
Do Fair Oaks, we'll see.
Okay, there's a portion of...
Where is it, too? All right.
It seems like I had like a couple blocks, and it just doesn't seem... Cool, it doesn't seem nice, because, you know, you don't even have a neighborhood watch that gathers in a, in a few blocks.
Okay, I've highlighted a portion of Fair Oaks that is in District 4 at the moment. Would you like it in District 3?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Supervisor Natoli? So if, what if we went down to Jackson Highway, all the way down there, would that pick up any population down there?
I think you did, didn't you?
I didn't think I could went that far, then we went down to White Rock.
Oh, well, yeah, you could...
East of the city, you know what I mean?
Oh, I see, no, you're not going to pick up any population.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, we bring the map back, I will take a look at it.
What is that, the area that's just west of the landfill?
Yeah, yeah, if you took, he's already got grant lines, so let's go and take a look at it and see, there's some potential growth in there, I think.
Well, there's some population there, Sue.
Oh, you might pick up some...
There's a, there's a, there's a mobile home park in Rancho Cordova that I, I had Gold River, and I had a, I have a mobile home park in my district, and that is the only part of Rancho Cordova that I have, is one mobile home park.
Mm-hmm. You mean currently?
Currently, I, I don't know if it's drawn into District 4 on this map, you, you took Gold River, but did you...
If, if we know where it is, we can look.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense for that to be in District 4, really. That could go in District 3.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, otherwise...
Along with Gold River.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's...
Is this all of it, Doug?
This is the portion of Fair Oaks that's in 4 currently, and I, we're almost ready to send it to 3.
Do it.
Do it.
And that's all of Fair Oaks in District 3 now?
That is correct.
That improves the deviation.
That's good.
Yeah. You want to look at that mobile home park now?
Yeah, let's do that, because that's right adjacent to Gold River.
No, that wasn't D5 up until the last redistricting. It's where, it's where, yes, where Citrus Road, Sunrise come together, they're just north of Coloma.
Quite a few people in that park.
Hold on.
So it'd be Sunrise south of the river, north, just south of Coloma Road.
We just made a mistake. What I just did is give you that Orangevale piece in District 3. See this brown line?
Oh.
That's the Fair Oaks line?
Oh, yeah, no, that goes in District 4, yeah, yeah, that goes in District 3, I mean, that goes in 4.
Yeah, um, where's the Fair Oaks piece?
Yeah, where's the Fair Oaks piece that we thought was in?
I think it's over by the notch.
Up there?
Somewhere around there.
There's another Fair Oaks line. All right, let's try that again. I'm going to go this way.
Well, we know right now we're within the deviation. We can...
My staff will know, let's see.
All right. That thing we just did, I'm undoing, so that Orange Vale is whole in Four.
Thank you.
No, you just, you just redid it.
You just...
I just redid it. That's right, I'm supposed to hit the X, you big dummy. Those folks should be awfully confused, they've been back and forth in two districts six times in the last two minutes. Yeah.
Red button, Doug.
So with this, why not do the X, so there you go.
There you go.
There you go.
That's it.
The...
I don't know where that Fair Oaks area is.
It's just to the east of the notch, if it's still in District Three, it might have already been written out of District... I mean, in District Four, it might have been written out on this map already.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see it.
I'm told the bulge should go east of Almond Avenue. I'm having trouble seeing the...
So Almond Avenue is one block east of the current boundary there, Doug? It's a, it's a north-south roadway, right? Greenback and Almond.
I can't see, I can't see the streets.
Okay, I've highlighted Fair Oaks, and I'm going to look for a part of Fair Oaks that's not in Three. All of Fair Oaks is currently in Three, at least what the Census Bureau calls Fair Oaks.
Got it.
Okay.
What about the mobile home park? Did you want to look at that?
Yeah, that's got a lot of people, I think.
Well, yeah, because it has to go to Five or Three, you can't go... Four wouldn't have any connectivity to it, right?
Oh, with Gold River out of the picture?
Yeah, it seems like it makes sense to go in Five or Three.
Yeah. Because Gold River is going to Three, right?
I'm just not sure where it is, Sue, you want to tell Doug where it is?
Yeah, sunrise, sunrise of Coloma Road. Sunrise and Coloma. Southeast corner.
Is that right? When you're a kid, yeah.
The red line on the, my left is Sunrise. All right, keep coming down, where's Coloma? Is Coloma south of here? No, it's right there. Okay.
Right off of Sunrise.
It's north of 50.
Yeah, it's north of 50, where you're, where you're showing the deviation, little blotch in there, it's right.
Okay.
Okay.
It's in already, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a tiny little piece of something there. Yeah.
Already in?
That's, that is... In Three.
In Three, already.
Is that the mobile home park you're talking about? Okay, where should we assign it? Three. To Three.
Where it should be.
If it's in Three, it's where it should be. Okay, yeah, it's, it's, in this drawing, it's in Three. Okay.
It's already in Three?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, that's probably why it got written into Four, because it made sense the way the line went.
So do you want to look at the White Rock area, you said?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, maybe, going south from there. Don, what do you think?
Yeah, go up Grant Line to Aerojet, coming south to Aerojet.
There's no houses out there, though.
No, not yet. Might clean up their line, though. Okay, here's White Rock, and there's Aerojet over there. Grant Line and White Rock is right here. Okay, then I think that the part to the left, yeah, where you are there, it looks like the map is kind of off-center from what the line is there, but that should go, go to District Three, I think, take Grant Line straight up. This one here? Yeah.
Yeah, there's no folks, sorry.
Take that block and make that, just follow Grant Line Road.
Yeah, that cleans it up.
Yep. Cows. Okay. I'm going to move, follow it up, make sure the line stays with Grant Line Road to the... Did I add anything or not, there was a zero in there? There was a zero.
All the way down to Jackson Highway?
What are the numbers now?
Three is under by 23, and Five is over by 92.
So we need to make some adjustments.
Yeah, we're over, over 10% at this point.
Even Mather wouldn't, would Mather solve it?
I can't see the numbers on this chart, I guess, can you scroll up a little bit? I can't see. Just a little bit down, please.
Excuse me, Doug.
Yeah?
My staff is insisting that the Census Bureau information's wrong about the, in the Foothill Farms area near American River College.
What would we do without our staff?
Can you...
So what are the deviations, I cannot see on my chart. I can see one, two, and three, I can't see four and five. Can you see them?
No, he has to scroll down.
He's got to scroll, yeah, sorry.
Mr. Natoli?
Yes.
For your information, Mather has 4,400 people in it.
Right, I said that earlier.
Mather wouldn't solve it, but it would bring it back a little bit.
There's a mess we have to clean up later. I'm sorry, where are we going next?
Well, his staff had a problem with the census, does that change the numbers, Rich?
Yeah, it might change a little bit.
Can you?
Let's look at that.
Doug, can you just scroll down so we can see the deviation with Five? Up top there. Thank you.
9,200 here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make the, there you go.
So you're going to pick up some more Foothill Farms, it sounds like, then Rich goes, could you do that? Real close. Okay. This Foothill Farms, there's North Highlands, goes around like this. And you recall a small part of North Highlands over here next to McClellan.
Can you go down a little bit, Doug? That area right there, east of...
They're saying that's Foothill Farms?
Part of it.
I'll see. Well, again, it's, it's up to you, folks, because the Census Bureau says that that's, that's North Highlands.
I think that's over by Hillsdale and, no?
Yeah, there's Auburn Boulevard there, College Oak, that's where I recall the college is.
That's by College Oak?
The Census Bureau thinks it's North Highlands, but we're Sacramento County, we can do whatever we want.
Well, College Oak, are you talking about American River College?
Mm-hmm.
They're saying that's North Highlands?
Yeah, the Census Bureau... Yeah.
Well, no, but you're, you're showing it as North Highlands in this map, right, Doug? Yeah, that's not, no, that's not North Highlands.
So make, so make an adjustment there.
Yeah, that's not how, that's not how the people know it, I don't think.
What you get when you Google it? That's North Highlands.
Madison Avenue?
Yeah, that might fix, that might fix the numbers. There's a lot of people around that college.
So, shall we put the college in District Three?
Are you, are you just saying, put everything on that side of 80 is Foothill Farms? Yeah, just to make the freeway the line?
And Madison Avenue is the south of, on the south?
Well, that is everything... I don't think of that as North Highlands at all. Or maybe, maybe, I don't know.
4,000 folks to be added to Three. To where?
Well...
Where shall I go? Any further?
To the edge of what you changed.
I think you go south more, I'm not sure, but... Is that...
Down to Myrtle?
Well, keep going, because that, that's the college.
Oh, the whole 80, I-80 part?
Yeah, that whole side is...
New problem.
What we know, what we've always known as Foothill Farms all our life. Yeah, they're right.
It's going to take a while if I do it this way.
I'm thinking everything on that side of the freeway, are you?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. That's a good dividing line.
Mm-hmm. And that's how the community knows it also. That's got to be good.
Does County Executive have any recommendation on this? They're watching so intently, Ann. 12,000 folks to be added to Three. Do it. Do it.
What does that do to Four now?
3.5, 1.4, 2.9.
That doesn't ruin it for, the numbers for Four?
Quarter deviation, six and a half deviation.
You and I, Four and Three had both been under, but they're both in growth areas.
Yeah.
How much under are we? I mean, I know Three, but how much is, under is Four?
1.43%.
4,000.
4,000 people.
Well, that was quite a bit. Yeah, exactly. Just we had to get, someone had to back us into a corner, I guess, before we figured it out.
Interesting. If we can stick in that area, though, if you see the rest that we didn't move into Three, see that foot of Four that the Census thinks is North Highlands? That's a really weird shape. Is that, just to the west of where you're talking about there?
Dog.
So now that we moved the college side, the west side out, we have this, oops. See how Four is coming down?
Why didn't, how did that happen?
That's west of the freeway that, that the Census considered North Highlands. I don't know if you also consider that North Highlands or not, but just, yeah.
That's south of the college? I, I can't see the forest through the trees.
Bring it back in.
Oh, I see.
I thought we cleaned it up by doing everything on one side of the freeway to District Three.
Now there's a little arm that comes down from your district to take in what's North Highlands west of the freeway. Can you show it again? But not Foothill Farms.
Can you, can you show me what it looks like? So I have one side and he has the other, basically, and North Highlands is technically still split, because it's, the Census shows that as North Highlands. But I don't think the people live it that way.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I think you're good on the, you have a good record on east of the 80.
It's just a funky configuration.
It's a community of interest, yeah. You now have this kind of lightning bolt piece of Four coming down, that, I don't know if that makes sense. If that's how the residents think of themselves as North Highlands, then we respect that, but I want to be sure.
Doug, since we're...
Is that way you, makes sense to you?
Doug, since you're in that area, and with the blessing of District Three to just make consistent the boundary for District One, can you, can we put Hagen Oaks back into, into One? Does that make sense?
Tell me.
Yeah, it's in the city, there's no population, it's not going to make... Over here, Doug. The, the, Hagen Oaks Golf Course.
Oh, okay.
So, take that out of...
I know, I know where that is.
Take that out of Three, put it in One, please.
Okay.
And that's just to follow the city boundary, not because I have a particular affection for that golf course or anything.
I have an affection for it. I think it's a good golf course. I didn't know it was in the city.
Flo, I got a text saying they're having a tough time viewing it on TV. Is it coming across okay? Do people are having a tough time seeing what we're doing on, on TV? I don't know if that's the case or not, maybe that's past tense, but, okay.
I'm having a tough time seeing it, I'm sure they are.
Just the city bound, just follow the city boundary, that's all.
Okay, that's what I've done.
No, you haven't.
Oh, this one one over here.
Nope.
No.
There you go.
But above it.
One more. There you go. Nope.
Is that it?
I think you have, if you can zoom in on that, you'll see there's a portion north of the freeway, I think that you got, that's...
Right here?
Is that the city boundary? As long as it's following the city boundary, that's all. That's all I'm interested in.
There's the boundary right there.
Yeah, okay.
What else do we need to clean up?
Let's see how syncing is doing. Doesn't look right. Yeah, it's the freeway. Those freeway blocks again.
Are all the lines in yours, Don?
Well, I think we need to do a scan, go down, go along and take a look.
Since we're on, in a cleanup mode, there's something I needed to discuss with Mr. Kennedy, if I can show you here. Mr. Z... I need to find it. Oh, this is it, right here. We somehow inadvertently refer... We somehow inadvertently gave a block of the city of Elk Grove to you. And we don't want to do that. This is for Courtney, your registrar voters. Let's not make her do a precinct for that, for that... Separate precinct for that little thing. Okay, so I have to go from 5 to 2. I did that to Tulare County in an assembly plan once, so for 10 years, 7 people in Tulare County were assigned to Fresno, a district in Fresno.
Bet you they love you.
I never apologized, Courtney. I'm sorry. I never apologized to the clerk down there, or to the registrar.
I have a question when we have a free moment.
All right, sure.
On Rancho Marietta, do I have all of Rancho Marietta, or are there... It crosses Jackson Highway?
Right.
And...
Previously, including the Mobile Home Park, should have been in D4.
I just wonder if I have... Do you know what I'm talking about, Don?
I do, and so what's the lines down there, maybe you've...
It looks like there's a tiny block right here. Let's see if it's an actual block. It might be bigger than what we're talking about here.
There's a lot of new houses out there also.
Yeah, vitararies.
On the other side, but they're technically Rancho Marietta, right?
That's just... That follows a creek down there.
Yeah, no, I think it's... I think what she's talking about is where that red block is. Could you bring that up a little bit, Doug, please?
It's 16 people? What did you need, Mr. Nottoli?
I can't see the roads.
Yeah, so is that District 5 now, or what?
Yes.
Well, the boundaries are fine now, right? There's no conflict.
I'll show you. The little red line is the current district boundary. The green line is what we drew yesterday.
Well, yeah, because the box...
It's Van Vleek Road, it goes right off of Jackson Highway.
Yeah, and that's south of Jackson Highway. That's not Rancho Marietta, that's the ranch.
Okay. Would you like that in 5 or 4?
I don't... Is that Rancho Marietta?
No, it's not Van Vleek's Ranch.
I'm talking about Rancho Marietta, the community on both sides of Jackson Highway. That's further down, further south.
Further west.
And probably more rural part of District 5, but there's... I just wanted to make sure...
There's Marietta Parkway, all that's in District 4. They're right there, Sue. There's the Mobile Home Park, where his cursor is, all that's in.
I think he's got it in. Does he, Don?
Yes, he does. Yeah. And the dotted line is currently in District 4, you said?
The little red line, yes, is... That's the current line for District 4.
Oh, what is... What is that? Let's see.
But as I just pointed out, it...
I don't think there's anything there. I think it's...
Well, the block is huge, whereas the dotted line is small, and the block contains what Mr. Nottoli called the ranch, not Rancho Marietta.
My staff are saying Marietta is in and we're good. Is that what you see, Don?
Yeah, so I'd leave the line following the highway like you have it there, not that...
Yeah, I don't know where... I think that's the sheriff's substation or something.
It could be. So is there a way to kind of follow the boundaries, to go, you know, at least those that were the north? You know, coming across the county, right from there all the way across and see where 4, 3, 2, 1, and all?
Yeah.
Doug, is there a way to have transparent shading assigned to each of the districts?
Yeah.
So we have different colors so that we can distinguish a lot better?
Okay. There are some, you know, little holes we need to clean up, but I'll let Doug do it.
Well, you've done good. You're 6%, 6 and...
Madam Chair, Board Members, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Courtney Bailey Canales, Registrar of Voters. I just wanted to share that when it comes to the legal definition of the boundaries with the cities, which you all know, you know, we have all of that information, and before you adopt your final maps, we will have our GIS teams go through and make sure there's no sliver mist or census, and if there is a census designated area that was weirdly carved, we'll bring it back to your attention.
Oh, that's great.
Just to let you know, we will be kind of proofing it on our side as well to make sure they meet our legal boundaries.
Can you, then, Courtney, please make note of the Foothill Farms, North Highlands, 80 split, because as you heard, there's a census designated place that does not agree with the way it's been interpreted here, so I would hate for your staff to make the assumption that that was a mistake when it wasn't.
Yes, that is on my list, and we will have our GIS team confirm that, because obviously we want to make sure we have the right ballots for our voters. So I just wanted to share, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not the prettiest color scheme, but that gives you good contrast there.
Yeah. Oh. What's that, the neck of... I always used to... I refer to the existing District 4 as the pterodactyl because it looks like a...
It used to be Florida, I'm not sure what it is now.
No, but because, you know, the head of the pterodactyl is Gold River there, but... So if you look at the neck of the pterodactyl, by the 50 insignia, is there still like the neck of the pterodactyl that should be in...
Yeah, that's the City of Folsom boundary.
I see, okay, never mind.
What's that piece out there? Is that orange?
That's the Folsom Auto Mall.
No, 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 to the north, just at the top of the map. Yeah, right there. Was that the area you were trying to adjust earlier?
Yeah, Orange Vale.
That was Orange Vale that had been in D3.
Oh, yeah. Right. We wanted to make Orange Vale whole.
So, Don, did you want to go around the boundaries now?
Yeah, I'd like to see the boundaries. The colors are certainly good, so maybe you can start wherever you want to start with the county and just kind of walk us through the whole county with this thing.
What's next?
Did you just ask what's next?
Yes.
Yeah, we wanted to walk the boundaries of every single district to just make sure we're all on the same page.
Which is what I do now. When I did that thing to Tulare, I learned my lesson. Since we're here at 4, shall we start with 4?
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll start at the Folsom city boundary here, go south, Prairie City, Grant Line. 16, or Jackson Highway. County boundary. That's Folsom Lake right there, I believe. County boundary again. Through Antelope.
Wait. Can you go back? There was a sharp, you know, go up and left, or it's behind one of those blocks. It's the purple.
No, one click back.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Is that correct, the way that's... I guess it is. It's along a main thoroughfare.
Needed to be cleaned.
Let's have a look here.
Okay.
That might be some blocks we need to clean up, but I'll check later.
What are you talking about? The one I just went back to?
That purple line right there?
Oh.
Bring the map up, Doug, if you can, at that scale.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Keep on going. All right, right there. So it's following Antelope Road and Dewey, right? Is that right?
Antelope and Daly.
Daly.
There's a block right there that we need to assign to, looks like 4.
Yep.
Not showing up.
To 4 or 3?
It's from 3, I think. Oops. Yeah, I can't pick up the block, so it might be all right. We'll check later. All right. Proceeding along the county line. There's the Drainage Canal.
Should be railroad tracks, right?
East Levy. It's the East Levy, and the railroad tracks are right there, right?
Yeah.
What would you like the boundary to be?
I think it's correct.
No, I don't think it's changed at all, right?
All right, yeah.
Down to Ascot?
Ascot?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what this is here.
Oh, it's... Keep on going, you'll see it's part of McClellan, I think.
Oh, this is the real end of peace right there.
That's just the McClellan.
Yeah.
What's that purple, though?
Oh, yeah, here we go. That doesn't look right, does it?
That's an island.
That's why we're doing this part of the program here.
That's why we're doing this part of the program.
Does that go with McClellan or with 4?
It goes into 4.
Yeah, from 3 to 4.
Is the other part of McClellan?
Good.
There we go.
Yeah? Is that blue part of McClellan?
Yeah, that's McClellan.
It goes up like that?
Yep. This is a tiny piece of North Highlands that's currently in 1, right there.
That's... What is...
That's Freedom Part... That's where you turn left to go to the aerospace.
Tua Avenue.
I think that should go to 4, just to be consistent.
That eases it a little bit.
Okay, this is the North Highlands area. Looks like these blocks here belong in 1 from 4. Let me make sure. It's the freeway.
Roosevelt Road.
Is the other side of Roseville Road Sacramento proper, or that's just your district? That's always been your district? Is that showing up?
No, that's the city.
Okay. All right.
Gonna get a lot done there, you got 3 supervisors coming together.
It's... That's...
There's the city boundary. Going back up to 4.
Yellow spot at the tip of the city.
Oh, there you go. For 1.
Put it in District 5.
No, I think it's 3. It's not coming. Okay.
Oh, I see. Because the lines don't match up, I guess.
Oh, it should be in the purple?
Yeah.
Well...
Give it 3.
It looks like... Yeah, right, that's a problem.
There you go.
That's good.
Just want to make sure, so now we've got the... This is that North Highland thing we're talking about where 4 is coming down, and just want to be sure that this piece of North Highland actually is North Highland and belongs. Because it's an odd shape where 4 is coming down between 1 and 3, so I just want to make sure that you're all agreeing that that actually is considered North Highland and is part of that community that belongs to that.
Or is it Foothill Farms?
I will tell you, I bother...
It goes to Roseville Road.
If you Google "North Highlands," it doesn't look like that.
Does Foothill Farms go to Roseville Road? That's the question.
Google North Highlands map.
Can we make it a little bigger? Well, it's Roseville Road right there.
You're right, Supervisor Serna, I mean, on the map, it shows American River College in North Highlands. I just don't think anybody's... I mean, certainly members of the community don't consider it that.
As long as it's not a challengeable
Right.
issue, right?
Well, that's actually why I'm asking is... So I think you're good on the college side. You've talked about the record in the community and all that. Now the question is the west of the 80. South of... What is that? South of Palm.
Yeah, when you cross... When you cross Madison, we've always called it Hillsdale, or, you know, it crossed into a different area. Foothill Farms was always on the other side of the freeway. To me, that's my personal growing up.
When I was... Again, I know the story. O.C. has a... Doug O.C., the former congressman, he has a North Highlands address. His house is around there somewhere. I know that. Because that's... If you drive through there, you'll see the horse properties on either side, and one of them is the O.C.'s.
The... I think on the other side of the freeway is North Highlands, but north of that, you have it Foothill Farms crossing the freeway, and I'm trying to remember. Maybe we can go north a little, go up a little and see... Yeah, right there, Rich. Oh, okay. Is that Foothill Farms? All the way on that side of the freeway?
Doug, if you plug in 95841 zip code, it takes in all of that area east of the freeway that we've highlighted there.
I always thought of that side of the freeway as North Highlands, but...
East of the freeway?
Where his hand is.
Well, that's west.
You know better than I do, it's in your district.
That's 842 right there. 841 is down here. And I assume 841 goes over this way.
I think of Wallerga and all those areas on the other side of the freeway as North Highlands. Do you? Well, you... They have... It has Foothill Farms. I think of Foothill Farms on the Carmichael side of the freeway.
Yep, likewise. Yeah, 95841 is a Foothill Farms zip code, but Supervisor Serna is right, the map, when you pull up North Highlands, it's not consistent with that, so I don't know what the right approach is here.
It depends on what you're... You know, I can say that the P-Bid... Can you go up a little bit? The P-Bid crosses into Antelope and Foothill Farms north. The P-Bids on... The P-Bids on Wallerga...
What if we just kept it by zip code, Doug?
Yeah, it would make sense for the, the P-Bid to stay together, because that's an economic development thing.
I, I can assign by zip code.
Is, is 42, 95842 on the other side of the freeway?
I mean, 42 and 41 are, I mean, I, the community certainly identifies as Foothill Farms, both of those zip codes.
41 is what?
Foothill Farms.
And what is, uh...
North Highlands is 95660.
I didn't see it on here. There it is, over there. Okay. So, would you like me to assign 95660 to four?
It should already be in four, I think.
Can I just point out that if, looking at the deviations for three and four, they're both under, but by different margins. If you were to somehow, in this area, put more into three and take from four, you would help that situation.
Yeah, because three is under...
I mean, well, we could just take Roseville Road.
I was thinking, what if you just, yeah, did Roseville Road to, uh...
All the way down there to Southville?
Yeah, just, yeah. So if you take Roseville Road and what is that, Atwood Court or something? Or wherever that, that...
Yeah.
Palm Avenue, Palm Avenue.
If you just follow Roseville Road down and just make that into three...
Right, right.
Right, exactly.
It'll clean it up quite a bit.
This whole area right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That crosses Roseville Road, but that's okay, if you're okay with it.
Well, we might want to take it out, though, because this may make the deviation...
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, it's making it a little bit, it'd be cleaner just to do it along Roseville Road, I think.
Yeah, yeah, let's try that.
And there's also a little tip at the bottom that...
Let's see what that looks like.
11,700 from four to three.
May just flip that deviation.
Watch this. You're at zero almost, Mr. Desmond.
Four is, right at five, almost.
Negative five.
Five point oh two.
It's another eight percent, eight percent deviation.
We made the deviation, wow.
Eight oh one.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly okay if we reverse that, what we just did, put it back how it was. What do you think?
Well, before it was six and a half, now it's eight oh one, eight oh one, so you had a...
Let's keep going around the lines and...
You want, you want to undo what we just did?
Well, I, I think we can justify it either way, I mean, because it's certainly one, it's one zip code. It's part of the 95660 zip code. It's just a funky zip code configuration.
Yeah, again, if you, you know, you still got growth in those, in the unders, and, uh...
I think Roseville Road seems like the more logical line.
But I think to Don's point, I think even the deviation, even though the deviation grows a couple points, but we're still within, we're still under 10. The fact that the deviation is now low or greatest on the low side for District Four, District Four is going to see most of the growth in the next 10 years, right?
You certainly got Cordova Hills.
There are a lot of growth.
Alberta specific plan.
Yeah.
It'll be in D4, so I mean, so there's growth potential there, so...
I think this looks better, and I feel a little more comfortable that it wouldn't be challenged.
Yeah, if it works better for the community.
Let's keep moving at the boundaries, maybe we'll find some other cleanup, you know?
All right. Up to Antelope. That's Carmichael right there.
There's something, well, I guess it goes along the line, it's just the line is crooked, right? There's one street that...
There's a piece of Citrus Heights right here, it's currently in three.
Yeah, let's put that back in four.
Yeah.
That might be the Foothill Golf Course, I don't know.
220 people.
No, I don't know what it, I can't see.
Helped a little bit.
It, it looks like there might be some... Uh, no, go down on the corner, there, it looks like there might be a...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Some slivers that are in four that should be in three.
Right here?
I, I could be a little further over to the right. In the, there.
Right there?
Yeah, I mean, am I, I, I might be seeing it wrong.
No, it looks like you might be right, yeah.
There you go.
Good eye.
And just, you know, we will, we'll run the computer through and it'll check, so any, any little slivers like that, the computer will catch when we...
Oh, okay. I guess we're all worried that it's not going to be perfect.
Things like you just spotted with Highland Rainbow, areas where the census, census lines don't match the reality on the ground, we create this box.
Yeah, there's another one.
Another one right there.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Ooh, now we know why that's there.
Perhaps we need to leave that one alone.
Mm-hmm.
Going along Madison Avenue here. Fair Oaks Boulevard to Greenback. Greenback down Kenneth.
That's Fair Oaks, correct?
Yes, Kenneth to Madison.
It's an odd line.
Oh, there's, there's a corner.
Here's one. Orange Vale here. Fair Oaks here.
But can you go up just a little bit? Yeah.
Oh, there you go, yeah. Let's do this one first.
Got Rollingwood?
Well, that's a big one.
That doesn't, that's... That's probably why.
Here's that Folsom line. I think this is where we started.
Yeah. What is...
Is that the city limit?
Yeah, is that, is, can you move it up just a tiny bit? It seems like the... There's a hard line that is outside... Can you move it up just a little bit?
Like that?
Yeah, is that the city, the, the black line the city line, or is it the yellow line that's the city line?
The yellow line is your district line and the city line, yes.
Okay.
I've run into this before.
Yeah.
So we've covered...
I think we're done with four cleanup. Who's next?
Can we go, I think if you just went on the, started at the northerly part of one, between one and, um, three, four, and worked south, and come around that way, counterclockwise, you'll catch the remaining boundaries.
Start in Alberta?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen this line already.
Yep, yep, yep.
There's McCollum.
Yep.
There's Hagan Oaks.
Oh, whoa, whoa, is that a city boundary, that little jog, see it?
Yeah, let's have a look.
Yeah, good eye, yeah.
Mm-hmm. One from three?
Yeah.
700 folks?
Mm-hmm. Is Roseville Road, is that, is that a, is that a block or something?
Roseville Road, oh, there you go.
Oh, there's something yellow, yeah.
Yeah.
See how far it goes?
Oh, wait.
Wait, there was...
Go, go back up along the southerly boundary of the, um, the, right, right there. Ivern Boulevard, see it?
So that should go to three?
No, into one.
Oh, that one over there, okay.
It's a city boundary if you go to one.
Let's go to one, on, on the other side of, um...
What is that? Yeah. And it should be Ethan Way all the way down.
Go south now?
Yeah, please.
Is that something that we...
Yeah, that's something.
I don't, I don't think so.
I, I think it is...
Zoom back out, zoom, zoom back in, I'm sorry.
Okay. Might be wrong.
That should be in three then, right?
Well, it seems like there's a...
That's city boundary right there.
Is the gold the city boundary or the purple?
The purple.
Purple line, yeah.
Yeah, why was the gold the, the city boundary?
Never mind. Never mind.
Why was the gold the city boundary for, for, for my question over by Folsom then?
It's the overlaps.
It's the overlaps, the, the colors are overlapping.
Okay.
Proceed south, Mr. Serna?
Yes, please. Right?
Some more weirdness looking right there, but I think, it's probably...
That's the way it is right now.
Yeah. Campus Commons is now in three, let's make sure, yeah, Campus Commons is in three.
Zack State's in one now.
Howe Avenue is a boundary.
16.
Jackson, I think.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, we can go back up there.
Is that a problem right there, or is the gold the...
Go, go, I would go east to check the boundary, no, 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 there you go. Go east, uh, and between the, uh, three and five.
Right there?
Correct.
Yeah, that looks like a...
Yeah, nope.
Nope.
I'm not, not going to work.
Okay, Kiefer, then... Folsom Boulevard, crossing 50. To... That's Mayhew here. I kind of switched away from one, let's go...
No, 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 if you do it this way, it's, we'll pick up one where we left off. If you do this, then all we have to do is check the easterly and southerly boundary of one and two, and the southerly boundary of two and five, and we'll be done. Yeah, falls the river.
We're going around five.
Sunrise, yeah.
Sunrise. Okay, there's something here.
Something was wrong. You've really been a great help, Doug.
Thank Mr. Johnson as well, he's, he's helping me out here. Where am I going now?
Mr. Johnson.
Continue to go east.
Go east and then...
And then go north.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
He already did that, yeah. So you're, the three, four border you've already gone over.
Okay.
Did you do that?
Did you go up Grant Line?
Not Grant Line, I don't think so.
All right, let's go up Grant Line. There's something right there. See what it's in.
One cow.
There's a cow.
Won't be for long.
Cordova Hills?
No, it's, uh, Anatolia, or Cavalier Ranch, one of them. No, it's a, or a Cavala Ranch, one of them.
Prairie City Road here, between three and four. And then we've reached this Folsom boundary.
So if you go back down to, to Highway sixteen and power in roughly?
Go south from here?
That's all fine because we didn't, we didn't mess with that.
Yeah, that's all, the little jogs on one side of the city.
Just get the map up a little bit, please.
What's there, you mean?
No, 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 just move the map up a little bit, there, there you go, there you go. That, those boundaries have not been messed with.
That's correct.
Okay. So just keep following it west, please. Can you zoom in to the bottom of the, the finger that's in District one there? Follow Fruit Ridge, please. A little further to the west.
Right, at this corner here?
No, no, further to the west.
Right of ninety-nine, there we go.
There's, is it, what's that gray? Is that just the?
Oh, this here?
No. I guess so, I don't know what that is.
I think it's the borderline, it's that color versus the side of the city.
Okay.
This is unincorporated and that's the city.
I get that, and see where it says 2.37%? Right underneath that, just that line there, is that, that, that's the way it's supposed to be, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's all, that's, so if you just keep on going west now, okay, and then fall?
North.
Then we go north on the train tracks. And then we go west on Sutterville.
Sutterville.
We go north on Freeport.
Freeport.
And left on Vallejo, Vallejo all the way to the river. What's the, that's, okay, so that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, this, this here?
Yeah, it's sliver.
Okay, we're at the river?
Yep, and then I think that's it for one.
Yeah, I think so too.
Now you just need to check two and five.
Follow the river on down.
There's Freeport.
Something's wrong there or something, or?
This is the current line.
Oh, really?
I think it's just offset, that's why.
Okay.
I think the only adjustment you did, if I'm not mistaken, is the correction on the Elk Grove lock, right?
What's that, what's that, Doug, what is that?
This, this area here?
Yeah. That's current line, the red?
The, the brown line is the city line. And then this would be, let's see.
Elk Grove?
This is the?
Sanitation District plant.
The land, there's, is this where the?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
The, the treatment plant.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking where the, where the blue comes across the red line, what is?
You want me to put this area in five?
Yeah, wherever it was.
See if it doesn't.
Cleans it up.
Yes or no on that one?
There you go.
Right there.
Yes.
All right.
That's just a function of the weird city boundary.
This is a city boundary here.
That is a weird boundary.
Down here. This is just offset, as you say. Sheldon Road. Up to Geneva Point. Calvine, between Elk Grove and the county.
Keep going.
To the left. Here's ninety-nine.
Okay, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, you got that piece of Archie property.
We've, we've reached Excelsior and Calvine. There's a golf course here. To Gerber. Elk Grove Florin. Which becomes South Watt. And we've reached the number, the border with one again.
Can you just, just go west, please? Want to make sure that when you did the Gerber flip, you, we got every, looks like we got every parcel or every block. Yep. I think that's it.
Good. All right, where to next?
I think that's it, right?
I think it's number five.
No, I think we?
We've covered five's border between two and four. And the, the rest of it is the county line.
Yeah, Doug, if you could just go back to the, where Marietta, make sure we got that lined up right there. We made the, made the adjustment, but, I want to see where, Indio Drive and? Okay.
Stop right there.
What's, what's that gray line where the highway sixteen, furthest one to the left is? There's a line that comes down, gray.
This one here?
Yeah, right there, what is that? That's currently in five?
There's a creek here.
Yeah.
Might just be a block line.
Okay. If it's currently in five, leave it in five, I just?
Yeah, I can't identify it. This is a creek here. And then it just goes around like that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
What was, what do you think was the reason why they put that other section in four before, Don?
You're talking to, in the middle there?
Yeah.
Well, that's where the Mobile Home Park is, where the Equine Center is?
No, I mean, further down, in between Van Vleek and that area.
Oh, I don't know. They give me that little box there, I don't know about that. I mean, if there's something in there, you can, you know, double check your maps and?
I don't think it ma, it's, it doesn't matter, I didn't know if it was some?
As long as it didn't take in the, I know you want the service center and operating?
It's the Sheriff Service Center and?
That should be in D, D four.
Well, that's why they had it in there, maybe.
No, not there.
No, not there, it's, it's on the other side of that peninsula.
I'm just adjusting, it looked like there was a, a Marietta line there, but let me?
Oh, was there?
Let me ask you. See this right here? There's sixteen folks in there. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Could it give it to four or five?
Stay in D five, okay, but further down, it was D four before. The only thing I can think of that's there is the sheriff substation and a?
Yeah, I would say you want to keep that in.
That, that goes with the community, it works with the community.
It was that box before that you took out, that you were lying up by Van Vleek Road, but I, I think that was a little further to the? You might want to just check, I mean, Phil has a Google up too, see how that would line up. Again, you don't want to put the service center in D four, you want to leave that in, I mean, D five, leave it in D four.
Well, they, they work with?
Yeah, no, I agree, I, I'm in complete agreement, and the operating engineers is on that south side there, so there may have been a reason why that line?
Airport in D five?
Is there an airport?
Yeah, there's, it's a small, oh, not, not that big, it was a smaller section.
Airport should be in?
In five or four?
The census bureau redrew the block?
Is it in though?
Small area is no longer a census block now.
Oh, they?
The whole area is one single block.
Just leave it in D five, that's fine.
All right.
I think, Don wants to keep Van Vleek, right?
Yeah, but, but does it take the service center out? Because I think that's important.
They redrew the, it's bigger now, so it?
It is in?
Yeah, that, that's just one block, we can't subdivide it, so either?
It doesn't matter, we can still work with them even if they're not with us.
As long as you're fine with that, okay.
Right, that little triangle he was highlighting earlier is part of Rancho Marietta.
It is? Okay. Okay, that's fine. And, and the airport's in, I mean, Phil was asking, the airport is in, right? In D four?
I can't, I, I don't know where that, where it is.
It should be?
Kind of the bottom of that bowl.
In that section.
Can you scroll the map up a, a little bit?
Guarantee you.
Other way.
Like that?
Yeah, it's on the south side of sixteen. To the west a little bit.
I don't think we have airports.
It's a really small airport, I, I'm pretty sure it's probably in that.
Yeah, it's?
What do you think, Don?
Yeah, I think it's, it hugs it.
It's on the north side of the river.
So you're going to move that, the pink into D four, because that's part of Marietta, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Shall I assign these two blocks to a District four? And the one in the red I've highlighted?
Right.
Yeah, because it's Rancho Marietta and there's only sixteen people there.
Okay.
As long as it's Rancho Marietta, that's the address. Okay. Can you run that out to the county line? Amador.
Okay.
Please.
Yep, there's the Amador, Amador County right there.
Edge of the universe.
Well, that's the county line, okay, good.
Can I ask, can I look at one thing real quick? You don't mind? So go back to the La Riviera area, I know we, we added some additional population to D three over there. Just that area, I think it's actually part of Rosemont's in a different school district, I don't know, Don, that one little corner, south of fifty, east of Watt.
Right, to Cal, the, the Cal Center?
Yeah, and that's not currently in D three.
It's not.
Could we look and maybe see about, take, keep, just keeping it in D four?
I'm fine, it's eighteen hundred and eighty-five folks and you can bring it back, as long as, throw a deviation out, I was, you know, we were trying to?
Yeah, we were trying to add population, yeah.
So it's? There's branch, so what has to be?
Keep coming, you're right, almost there, Doug, yeah. Right.
Watt here.
Yeah, right, yeah, right there, yeah, that triangle. Put it back in.
What, what would you like me to do?
From three to five?
Back, back to five.
This area here?
No, come up, right, where fifty is there, yeah, and then, yeah, there you got it, that triangle.
This here?
Cal Center, okay.
Yeah, it, it will. Right.
But it's eighteen eighty-five, it's not very many.
It's not my, it's a different school district and it's, you know, I mean, it's currently in D five now.
Yeah, put that back in.
Between Watt fifty and?
Yes.
Folsom, there, okay.
It'll change it by eighteen hundred and eighty-five folks, I think. Yep, by eighteen eighty-five.
You'll take your deviation above three, probably?
Yeah, a little bit. Still won't take us out altogether.
I think I got it, eighteen hundred?
Eighteen eighty-five.
From?
D three to D five.
Three to five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll throw us up a little bit. Four point nine. We're still, still within the margin? Seven?
We're essentially nine percent deviation.
Yeah, okay.
And three and four are still in more of the growth areas than under this map.
Eight point five.
Okay, eight point five.
If there's anything coming out of five, or if they can go into four, that would help the deviation.
What about? No, if, could you go back to what the view you just had there?
Where we were?
Yeah, please. What do you, what do you call this, the, the east?
Butterfield Riviera.
What if that went into three? No?
No, they, they identify with?
No, that's right. They got the river there, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it's Butterfield River. I mean, the wedge that we had in there, yeah, is, you know, part of Rosemont, but it's separated by Folsom Boulevard and it's, you know, that's why it suggested we were trying to, but other than that? You keep communities together. So three needs to pick up some, is what you're saying? I don't see more than?
Or five needs to give up, if it can.
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, five, five needs to give up if anything, if it can.
To who?
Ideally to four, but it doesn't matter, really. Anything coming out of, five is our largest district? So as long as the territory goes into any other district, they'll make their deviations.
I don't know how you feel about part of, anything close to Rancho Marietta, or do you want to keep it all? I'm not?
Well, there's, you're not getting your population.
There's nothing else?
There's nothing else for him to get.
You'll get them in dozens, not in hundreds or thousands, so? That's why I looked at that triangle, I mean?
What if you look at the area where five, four, and three are?
Going back, what?
I'm thinking the Equestrian.
To the east, yeah, I don't know.
Well, you filled all that in, you got all Aerojet, east in Glenboro now, you got a logical boundary along White Rock, District four has.
Did you take part of that, Rich?
Yeah, I did.
Where?
Yeah, you, you took that from four, right? Or was that from you?
Yes, it was from four. But I was, I was wondering if you would go further east, is there any opportunity to peel off some more from five into either three or four? If you just?
I'm just saying the Equestrian Center, where?
Put, put your hand out, your grab hand on.
Marietta and the Equestrian Center, they're all kind of part of Rancho Marietta? Or do you want to keep that? It's okay if you do, I'm just?
Grab hand, Doug.
No, no, no.
Grab hand.
You've got all that, Equestrian Center's with you.
I don't have, I don't think I have the Equestrian, I, or?
Go back to, if you've got to go to Marietta, I mean, yeah, you got the Equestrian Center, it's all, it's all in there, it was in that yellow.
I thought that was in you.
No, no. Should be in yours, right there, it's?
It's all D four, Equestrian Center right there, Mobile Home Park, Airport. All in D four.
Okay, well? I don't know what else you could give to D four, he's? Do we have to give to D four?
No, is, you're, you're at eight and a half percent, so as long as we can justify all the lines, then? It's a level that makes us nervous, but it's, it's in that, in the ten percent window and you're? You're not going to get tripped up by census data or anything.
Is there a way to print that on one page and give us a copy of it so we can see the lines? All, all in one map? Or?
You mean, print from here?
You put it on a thumb drive and?
Or can you email it to Flo and she can print it and give us a copy of the map so we can see it? Because it's hard to see what, where we're at.
It's actually easier, you know, the interactive map we've been using where you can click which, which layer you want to do? It's an online site. We can put it there in five or 10 minutes, and then you can zoom in and scroll around rather than trying to see it.
I don't, I don't know, do you guys need, I, I don't, we don't have to, it's just I'm having trouble seeing the forest for the trees.
Let me take the zip codes off.
Every blade of grass.
Okay, if, well, he said it's a danger zone, like we need to make some adjustments, so I was going to look at, where can we do that?
He didn't say danger zone, I think he said nervous.
Oh, nervous isn't danger?
Keeps us on our toes.
Okay.
Danger Zone was Top Gun.
If we're happy, okay, if you guys want to live on the wild side, I can do it, trust me. I can roll with the best of them.
I focused on Bradshaw and Folsom Boulevard. This area here, should that be in 5? You want to keep that in 5 right here?
That's Butterfield.
Butterfield Riviera.
Yes. And then you have Lincoln Village, which is in the city to the south of 50. Those are all communities, and that's where the Bradshaw Theaters are, or, yeah, they're still there. Part of that community.
Folsom Cordova School District, right?
Mm-hmm. And we, you know, we heard from the neighborhood, we had a workshop out there.
So leave that as is?
I say yes.
Okay.
I think Don sounds happy with his district.
Yeah, again, I think, you know, if you want to look at communities, I think you've done an excellent job, certainly Doug with the cursor and listening to us, both in the north and south, you know, the community. I know obviously there's, you know, I certainly don't want to discount testimony about community of interest, but when I think about at least community frameworks, geography, and folks identifying and so forth, I think you've done a good job. I mean, obviously it's not perfect in eyes of some, but...
I agree, I agree.
To put all the comments in the same place, and to the point that you made earlier, the district that's really short is 4, which is almost certainly the fastest growing one.
It will be very...
Kind of anticlimactic.
Now what do we do?
So what, do we take a timeout for a few minutes and get a map? Is that what we're gonna do? Do we need a map?
Would you like to at least walk away with the map?
Natasha's gonna tell us what we're gonna do.
Perfect. All right, Natasha.
Well, first I want to say thank you so much. I know we're not done, but I have to say...
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you and the teleprompters and everyone who has been working on this, it's made it so much easier for all of us, and the interpreters who came and made sure everybody could understand it. And we have one caller that is on hold too, if you want to take that. Oh, thank you. Would you like us to take the public comment while you're getting the map situated? Maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, we're trying to figure something out right now.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take the public comment.
I'm gonna turn your mics off too, over there, Natasha.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, please transfer the caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you, good afternoon supervisors, Michelle Wright, Stack County resident. I'm calling in in regards to the dividing line between District 3 and District 4 for the Orangevale and Fair Oaks purposes. I know it was your intent to keep Orangevale whole and Fair Oaks whole, so just wanted to call out, north of Madison, between Pershing and Madison is actually Fair Oaks. Currently you have it within District 4, basically everything north of Madison Avenue is put into District 4, whereas that Pershing Avenue should be the dividing line between Orangevale and Fair Oaks, as it currently is. So yeah, that's like around Madison and Hazel there. I just want to let you know about that. Hopefully you can adjust that one. Thank you.
I had a little bit of trouble hearing you, do you mind just, are you still there, ma'am? She hung up. No, well, did you, did anyone, did others hear her?
Pershing?
She was saying that the notch that's north of Madison should be with District 4, is that what she said? I think that's what she was...
I wasn't clear what she said either, so I'm trying to find Madison here.
I thought she was trying to say that there's a little portion that's actually Fair Oaks and needs to be put in District, I thought that's what she said, but we can check.
Can you call her back?
It's probably a simple...
I feel bad, I struggle to hear sometimes. And I struggle to understand with that mic.
I know, and I'm sorry.
It's not your fault, but...
I have, sometimes I, well, my hearing is just not that good, but they're calling her right now. I mean, they're trying to get her on the line. And the food is being brought down as we speak, they're just separating everything out, so...
I think she's talking about that notch that crosses Madison, it's kind of a weird line. We cleaned it up by putting it back in Fair Oaks, but I can't, I don't know if she's saying it should be in District 3 or 4.
Well, we cleaned up that Orangevale area, for sure.
We cleaned up Orangevale and we also cleaned up, we cleaned up some of Fair Oaks. She's saying, my staff are saying she said between Madison and Pershing should be Fair Oaks. I'm not sure that's correct, he says, so...
I don't know where Pershing is, I'm at the, I'm at Fair Oaks Boulevard in Madison here.
It would be, it would be Kenneth in Madison, Kenneth in Madison, I think.
Okay, here's Kenneth in Madison, Pershing is right there. I'm not on screen, I'm sorry.
Maybe she's saying we didn't get the cover all of it.
They're transferring her in right now.
There we go.
Hi, ma'am, you're in the meeting now?
Hi.
Hi, can you just mute the meeting in the background and that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so what I was trying to say is between Pershing Avenue and Madison Avenue, currently you have that within District 4, and I guess under the consideration that that was Orangevale, however, that area north of Madison, south of Pershing, around Hazel, is actually Fair Oaks, so I'm hoping you can move that District 3, District 4 dividing line north at the actual line that is what separates Orangevale and Fair Oaks. Is that clear?
Can you...
Does it go to Beach or to Hazel?
Um, let me pull up my map.
Or Illinois, Illinois, Hazel?
Yeah, so it is, it's between like Hazel and Kenneth around.
Okay, so it goes all the way to Hazel, all the way over there. South of Pershing. Again...
Are you saying that those addresses are 95628 Fair Oaks?
Correct, yeah.
The Census Bureau calls that Orangevale. So it's up to you.
But it's in a Fair Oaks zip code?
Uh, let me bring the zip codes back up, see if it comes here.
Lo, can you give us, give us the map that he's working on?
There we go.
Where, can you point to where she's talking about?
Yeah, right here, right here. Pershing is that little line, this is Hazel, and this is Kenneth and Madison.
Well, I think if it's a Fair Oaks zip code, we should probably put it in D3. If it is.
I just don't know where the Fair Oaks zip code, can you do a search by Fair Oaks zip code and see where those are? I always thought of that as Orangevale, but 95662, she's saying it's 95628.
There's a zip code line right there, that blue line.
We visited this issue. We visited this issue.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's why, that's why we moved it.
So if you look at Turnbull Circle, for example, that's a 95628. And that's currently in the yellow, which is D4.
Correct.
And it used to be, it used to be in D3, is that correct? We just moved it into D4 today. That's what we just moved.
Well, if we move that back, it helps us...
We can move that back. Thank you for letting us know. I think we, I think it was in D3 before and we moved it into D4 today.
Yeah, I believe you did too.
Yeah, we'll fix it, we'll reverse it.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why it was not making sense to us, their zip code is different.
Should help on deviation.
Yeah.
Doug, are you guys ready for me to display the map? Are you still working on it? Okay.
We have one more correction going on and then we'll have it.
From, uh... 4 to 3.
Does it continue to the east?
Can you move that box? Because it looks like it's continuing.
Get your hand and move the, move the map over.
No, or move the thing over.
Now you made it worse.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
No, but there's another spot over there that doesn't make sense.
I think that little, that little blue finger may also be Fair Oaks too, right? Phil, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see if that's Fair Oaks.
That's what it looks like on the zip code map, too.
Yep, that's why it was like that. Glad we found out. I don't know if this makes a difference with Courtney Bailey and the registrar voters for census. Well, she's gonna clean up census tracts, right?
Right.
So... But it was this way before, so I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
That one's too big.
Nope. Alright.
So I'll go ahead and implement this?
Yep. So it hurts us on the deviation.
What's our total deviation now? What's that?
We're over 9.
How did it hurt us? I thought...
We just took all those people out of 4.
Oh, 4 was lowest, right?
Oh. Yeah, that does, that's a weird line. It, one side of the street is gonna be in District 3 and the other side's gonna be in District 4.
Happens everywhere.
You know...
Just because I have some past experiences as Supervisor Frost with people wanting zip code changes. Keep in mind, your zip codes are drawn based on how big the building is and how many trucks they can fit at the post office. They're not, they don't use zip codes to define communities, even though normally people do, but their lines are not drawn that way.
I suggest we go back.
I think it seems like Orangevale personally, but I don't know if Rich cares.
Either way, it's fine with me.
Huh?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine, either way.
I think we should revert back.
Undo.
Well, it's getting, we're making it worse than it, with the numbers, that's the problem.
So I'll undo that?
Yes. Hopefully the...
Hopefully the constituent won't mind.
Well, yeah, hopefully she'll hear the explanation about zip codes being somewhat irrelevant.
Although she might.
Are we done?
I think we are, I mean, I just want to ask one more time, do you think we should have left that in Fair Oaks or Orangevale? Do you, what do you think?
I'm fine with this, I think it's not, it's not worth messing up.
Deviation, yeah.
Okay. Okay, subject to cleanup by registrar voters and census track and city and everything, right?
Do you want me to maybe suggest what our next steps might be?
Please.
Okay.
Please.
So we will, as you just suggested Supervisor Frost, we'll clean up the draft and we'll add it to the online interactive map so that the public can see that, and we'll do that by Friday of this week. We'll also take that draft and finalize it, working with Courtney's team and NDC. And we'll publish a final map no later than November 30th, because it has to be published seven days before December 7th. And then we'll, of course, also draft a resolution to bring back to you with the legal definition for these boundaries on December 7th as well, and we'll work with County Council as well as Courtney. Go ahead.
Just curious, are we doing meets and bounds descriptions, or how are we? I'm seeing a lot of questions on the County Council forum about that, how people are doing that, which is why I'm raising that question.
Yes, historically we used to have to do, we have to get an engineer involved for meets and bounds. Now the GIS is so good that that is not needed to implement, some folks still do it out of tradition, but it really comes down to as long as we have enough that the registrars can feel confident when they implement where the lines are, so we can work with Courtney's team and figure out what they want specifically, but, but those are thankfully going the way and moving more towards what an average person can understand if here's the map.
Thank you.
And just for the meets and bounds that you're referring to would be like township and section lines and seconds and those kinds of things, so...
I think that's what we have in the county code now.
Yeah.
It's not helpful.
It also references natural and man-made, what do you call them? Landmarks.
If you're supportive of those next steps, that's what we'll do.
We are, and we do have a question from Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I know we've had a number of folks watching this, and I would, it'd be helpful if you could go through the numbers that are kind of on top, they're, you know, you've made it so we, a little better for us to read, but if you could talk about what the population numbers and what the deviations are, so we know with what we've now gonna stand forward for the next step, where we ended up, district by district, and with the deviations, please. Okay.
And what is this being called? The preferred map? Is this being called, what are you calling this map?
This is the final map, the final draft, final draft.
Final draft, okay.
District 1 has 324,487 people. That's a deviation of 7,510.
The ideal number? Why don't we state that again?
Sorry?
The ideal number is what?
317.
316 and change.
Oh, is it 314 or 316? Here it is, 316,977.
Okay, so 316,976 is the spot-on number, okay, thanks.
Right. And District 1 is 324,487, a deviation of 7,510, that's 2.37 percent. District 2 is at 316,279, which is only 698 under the ideal population, that's 0.22 percent. District 3 is at 314,541, under by 2,436, 0.77 percent deviation. District 4 is at 301,256, which is 15,721 under the ideal population. Four point, under by 4.96 percent. District 5 is 328,323, which is over by 11,346, a deviation of 3.58%.
Okay, thank you.
And then our total deviation, high to low?
What was the question?
He was asking, what is the total deviation?
So, yeah, it's high to low would be 4.96 to 3.58, which is, what is that? 8.54.
8.54.
One thing, just so there aren't any surprises, as we clean it up, there may be a block here, a block there that is misassigned or, you know, that's not contiguous with this district. So those numbers may change by, you know, 5, 10, something like that. So if people see the numbers change, that's where it'll be, and we'll record those.
Okay, well, I want to. I want to thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Yocum and your staff. And Natasha, you have been amazing through all this, through the interview process and all of the. All of our team from the county really helped a lot. And I don't know how we got to this fast. I didn't plan on going home for dinner tonight, so. I'm really happy. And I want to thank you so much for getting us this far. We're looking forward to working our way to that final map. I guess this is a final map, but I'm looking forward to seeing it.
You're certainly welcome, and I thank you, members of the board, for working with us on this. I also like to thank your staff again for assisting us and making it all look good and an easy way to do this. If I had done this in the legislature 10 years ago, you know, I don't know what would have happened.
And thank you for bringing that interactive map. That really helped us pull it together. I don't think we could have done it as well without it. So thank you for thinking of that, Supervisor Natoli, because I think that really helped. Supervisor Serna?
Yes, thank you. For those that may still be watching or care, we did receive a number of comments last night, and many speakers cited the fact that they thought this process was being rushed, was too compressed a timeline. And could you perhaps just put on the record again why it is that it does feel that way even for us, and it's a little out of the norm?
Certainly. It's a speech we're giving a lot these days, because this is obviously not of the county's choosing. So the idea was we would get census data in March, and we would have until December 15th to finish this process. Because of COVID and everything happened with that, the census data actually came out in mid-August. And California, in a decision made years ago, made a widely supported decision to shift the prison population, to count them with their last known home addresses. It was hoped that would take two to four weeks. That ended up taking seven weeks. So we had hoped to have the data in March or April and then have eight or nine months to finish this process. Instead, we received the data at the end of September. And because the end date is tied to the election, it's not moving. And the legislature actually considered moving the election and all of that, but they ultimately decided not to. So our start date went from March to early October, and our end date stayed December 15th. So and of course, as you now have to go through, there's the, you know, the formal introduction of the formal paperwork and all that that still has to happen, which is why we're. We have to have this wrapped up now. So yes, instead of nine months, we have two and a half.
Great. I think that helps, or at least it should in terms of the concerns that I think we all had, not just the people that decided to address us, having gone through this once before. And Dawn, this is what, your fifth time? It is.
The last.
It usually is a more extended and iterative process. And again, thank you for saying it wasn't of the county's choosing, because that's absolutely correct. Thanks.
I also want to say that it's not an easy process for us as a board, because it's very personal. Your district is very personal in talking about swapping, you know, losing parts of it or gaining other parts. It's hard, I think, for all of us. And I want to thank the board for working so well together to, you know, I think we did a really good job helping each other come up with a good map. I'm excited about it. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, I would just add to the thanks. Certainly thank Doug and Doug for their efforts, Natasha and Courtney and all the folks that have worked in the clerk's office for all the technical assistance here. And I want to, again, thank the public who participated at various junctures, at various levels, including obviously up until just a few minutes ago with the caller. And the effort to do the outreach in a compressed amount of time certainly challenged, you know, folks to find locations, to have the technical setup, to have the ability to Zoom call in and such. But I think all in all, it was, you know, a process that was open. And certainly, the work we did here in these chambers over the last two days was, you know, open. And again, we had the public comment, and I'm sure there's folks who were satisfied, those are a bit disappointed. But nonetheless, I think, again, with the technical assistance and working with the framework that we had, I think that, you know, we ended up in a place that hopefully reflects not only what the law requires, but a real effort to try to, you know, preserve communities of interest, to keep them together, recognizing the challenge of population and some of the the geography that, you know, is the framework for obviously where communities live and so forth. But with a million and a half people in this county, I think folks can, you know, hopefully over the next 10 years, see that what was anticipated relative to growth in some areas, but also reflecting mature communities and cities and communities of interest and all the various district boundaries and so forth. Again, I want to just compliment all the folks that have participated because they contributed in ways that helped us as board members deliberate and certainly to, I think, reflect on not only the seriousness of the task, but the gravity that comes with setting these boundaries and obviously what it means for people in this county. So I want to just thank everybody involved. And again, thank you, Madam Chair, for your efforts in leading us through it.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. I also want to add that there were so many different criteria that we had to meet. It was not about just a matter of geographic population, you know, ethnic, I guess, political persuasion, ethnicity, you know, there were so many federal and state laws that were in play. And then at the very end, when we were having those conversations about smoothing out the lines or, you know, doing something that makes sense to a neighborhood, even though the zip code is different, it's not because we don't care or, you know, it's really, it was a matter of, you know, we were, you know, we had to meet certain criteria to actually make this map approvable at the end. And so I don't know if I said that well, but I think what I'm trying to say is, especially to the last caller who came, called in with her zip code, which was Fair Oaks, my district ended up being the smallest district with the most potential for growth. But, you know, I was quite a bit, something like 15,000 below other districts. And so we were trying to hold on to what I had, I think, and make sure that map would be approved. So anyway, again, we want to thank the public for being a positive part of it and thank all the professionals that were, that made this happen. And we're excited and looking forward to moving. Moving toward December. Is it December 7, the final? So we'll see you. I think we'll see you a couple, maybe one or two more times. Okay. Thank you so much. All right. I think with that, we can move on to our closing items.
Madam Chair, someone called in on the county execs line because the redistricting. I closed the public comment after the last comment, so they just called in to the county execs line, which I just closed. They want to make a public comment on the map, so.
Oh, sure.
Do you mind taking that one call?
Yes.
And then off agenda, may I close the off agenda public comments? I've left it open the entire time.
Oh, boy. We were out of. We stayed up till 11 o'clock last night. That must have been our first problem. Yes, would you please? Thank you for catching that.
Thank you. And please transfer the caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Wendy Daniels. Thank you for taking my comment. I live in the Parkway Center area in South Sacramento. My comment has to do with the maps for redistricting. I am opposed to the 203 redistricting map, but I do support the 202 and the 201. It's vital to keep our district in whole for our voting purposes. Thank you for your attention, and you gentlemen and ladies, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your input.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Good evening.
And that actually does conclude all of your public comments.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next item, please.
And just so you guys know, staff said that the timing was impeccable. She hadn't even watched the meeting. She was just calling in, so.
That was.
Kudos to her. County executive comments?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to do a little piling on of the thank yous. I want to thank NDC for doing such a great job. But I also want to thank Natasha and Kim Nava, who helped with outreach materials, and Courtney, of course, and then their teams that supported them as well. And then I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Thank you for helping us get through it. Thank you all. We really appreciate it. And Supervisor Serna had a comment?
Yeah, so I assume we're on to Supervisor comments. I just wanted to say a few words and acknowledge the fact that I had a good fortune, as well as our county CEO, Wayne Edwards, to be a part of a historic Zoom meeting last week. It was the inaugural meeting of the Sacramento County Commission on women and girls, on the status of women and girls. And we had about 100 people in attendance, including the commissioners, your commissioners. And it was really a proud moment for all of us. And it was probably since the advent of COVID and Zoom, for me at least, it was the most heartfelt and positive remote meeting that I've had, again, the good fortune to be part of. And I can tell you that all the participants and those that contributed to the establishment of the commission and as it relates to the Blue Ribbon Commission prior to that, are very excited about the work ahead. And we should all feel proud and very good about the fact that this county now has a dedicated advisory body that will help guide us in future decision-making when it comes to resource allocation, policymaking, as it affects the status of women and girls here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I was there, and I think several others were there. And it was really fun to see you acknowledged for championing that effort of the Blue Ribbon Committee, and they're really excited, so we're all excited. Do not have any other supervisors in the queue to speak? And I believe we have no further business for the evening. So this meeting is adjourned.
So there's food in the kitchen?